At 9:00 AM, we're going to go ahead and get started. Commissioner Yawla.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
There.
Judge Shaw's here. Commissioner Dubning.
Here.
Commissioner Shindel.
Here.
Please stand in front of the prepared and take any questions.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to give us guidance this day. We ask that you be with everybody for this great holiday season. We ask that you bring peace to the world and give our president the proper or the correct way to deal with the political economy of the world today. We ask that you do.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next live on the agenda is discussion and action on the status of forming a trash pickup committee in Karnes County, and that's by Mrs. Moyn and Mrs. Sparks. I saw Mrs. Sparks earlier, where'd she go?
Hi, I'm Ann Lang.
Ms. Lang, you can come here.
I'm Ann Lang, and I'm going to address everybody here, okay, not just up here but out here also. I'm glad to see that there's a lot of people, there should be more. Mr. Dubning is probably the only one in here that knows that when I stand up and say something, I mean it. And it doesn't make any difference if my wife has been pregnant or not because I have been through enough of that. I'm a veteran, a retired TCJ law enforcement, and I'm now just staying at home. Now that you know a little bit about me, I want you to know that I don't know what is going on, but I have been listening to a lot of people in town. All we hear about in the newspaper, and I'm not mad at you, okay, you know I love you to death, but there's too much argument going on and it's making our county look really bad. I mean, people are laughing about it and people are mad about it. And I don't know if Mr. Yarder is here, I don't know him. There you are. And I heard that you guys are very fanatic about all of this. And I can't blame you. If you're mad about something, you should stand up and say something. But to have it in the newspaper every single week is making us look really bad. Not only that, our county is getting very, very dirty. We should, as I understand, working on inmates getting out there and getting it cleaned up. It's really not a good thing. We need to hear more about what the county is, what we're doing for the county. We need to, I didn't know, had no idea until this morning that we were getting a county, our new county jail, and it was going to be put down by the playground for kids and stuff, all of that. You know, we need to know those things. We need to know what is going on with our county. And I am going to beg the Yarders and everybody else who is mad at Barbara Shaw, Judge Shaw, I'm not friends with anybody here, okay? I kind of keep to myself. But when I have something to say, enough is enough. We do not need to hear about all the bickering in the newspaper about what is going on. Mr. Yarder, I am so sorry. I don't know what kind of bad feelings you have about Judge Shaw. I don't know what kind of bad feelings Judge Shaw has about you guys, and it needs to stop.
Ms. Lang has three minutes.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and action on the status of forming a trash pickup committee in Karnes County, and that's by Mrs. Moyn and Mrs. Sparks. I saw Mrs. Sparks earlier, where'd she go?
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you again for giving us this opportunity to become speakers. Issue of the trash in Karnes County. As you're well aware, over a year and a half ago, this was brought to the Commissioners' Court, the possibility of forming a trash committee, which members were appointed, myself, and the five, I believe it might have been Darlene Wiffel, maybe from, I'm not sure, from Pete, I'm not sure who you had appointed in precinct. And I believe James had some, Mr. Rosales or uncle or something, but that never materialized and nothing ever happened. And so with that being said, we have a major problem with trash in Karnes County. And whether it be the city or the county's roads, wherever, something needs to be done about forming some kind of a program to help, as y'all had the one that said, keeping Karnes safe. Maybe we need to have one keeping Karnes beautiful. These oil companies that are going out to help pick up this trash, that's great, but there's not enough of them and it's still not solving the problem. It's putting a Band-Aid on it, getting the inmates to go pick up the trash. They didn't, we need to do something, whether it be put up signs, start ticketing people for violations, doing something, educating the people to. I know they have trash pickups and all of this stuff, but a lot of this stuff, it's just, if you drive by the Sonic, you can see how pitiful it is over there behind the Sonic. We want growth here, we want people to come in, and who's going to want to come into these areas when they're looking like that? And I wouldn't even want to be a business owner to have stuff like that. And so I'm here to ask what your solutions are and what you plan to do because if we just have people go out and pick up this stuff, we are rewarding them for their baggy paper. We're cleaning up their messes, and that, I think that needs to stop too. We need to do something to educate the people, to, our own people, to watch each other and allow these companies maybe to, not the companies, but the businesses, to have places for their people to really dump their trash. Maybe they need signs, maybe we need this committee to work with business people and some kind of solution to come up with to try to make this a cleaner place. And I don't know if you have any other suggestions. I've talked to different people where they have banned trash bags, where they have given reward, incentives, the businesses have given incentives to customers that come in and shop with maybe a ticket for a drawing or a little discount or some things because they aren't using the money on the trash bags. But I think it's really important that we do something and not just every time us come up here and talk about it and then five, six months passes again, and a year passes again, and here we are again, and the trash is there even worse. And so I'm asking you to please take some form of action on some kind of a program to help evenize our county.
I would really like to know why we started a formal committee and then it was never followed through on. I mean, I came, before Cheryl got on board, I came to several Commissioners' Courts and addressed this court about that issue. You were going to do this, that, and the other thing, and nobody ever followed through with any of it. And I have nothing against any of you, I just have something against the policy of putting things off. That's all I wanted to say.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, well, I do remember when we voted on that to make a committee. I think there was, was there going to be one Commissioner that was going to kind of oversee everything?
Yeah, and I believe it was Carl. I think it was Carl.
Which he's gone now.
Right, that's not an excuse.
No, I'm not trying to make an excuse, but what I'm trying to tell you is that we can start the ball rolling again, but if one Commissioner, which is not here anymore, is the one that took it over and was going to do it, then we can try and form another committee, start with new people, and then y'all as the committee, go to each entity, go to the cities, come to the county with ideas, and then if we can help, we can help. And maybe the cities can give you ideas, then you go meet with them. It's going to take, it's going to take the whole county, not just us five here.
Right, and that's great. And so maybe it might be that this committee might be able to meet with, because it's like, well, it's not just, it's a county, it's like looking at the Sonic situation, that's the city of Kennedy, you know, but I mean, it's everywhere, you know, and so.
Those pictures, I'm sorry, the pictures that you show them, they look terrible.
Yes, I have. And would you, as a business owner, like say Nicky Milton across the street, every time he opens his door, he's looking out at this trash. You know, not only is it an eyesore, it is a health issue. That is, that is not, and those Medina children's homes, receptacles that they have across in the Wynn's parking lot, if you've ever driven by them, that is becoming a dumping ground. They're putting stuff there, people are putting stuff there, old mattresses, and it rains, I mean, it's not, it's not usable, a lot of the stuff that they're doing here, it's just basically dumping.
Maybe, I don't know what the answer is, but maybe if the committees were to meet with the cities, just say, I'm not picking on Sonic, let's just say.
No, I know.
X department, right? If their trash is the one that's going over to another lot and if X department's trash, maybe they should be fined for it. Even though maybe they didn't do it, the customers did it.
Exactly.
But they can put up a fence and clean up or send someone out to clean up, I don't know what the answer is. But within the cities, I think it would be a lot easier to do a cleanup than it would be in the county because at least in the city, it's, you know, X department's trash.
But we're just asking for the support of the county, the Commissioners' Court to form some kind of committee so that some kind of steps can start to be taken to help the situation. And I know y'all are busy with a lot of other stuff, but this keeps growing. If you look across at Walmart, across from Walmart, between those hotels and Hibbits and all of those trash plastic bags out in there, so I don't know, like I said, whether it be, you know, banning plastic bags, you know, that's like taking guns away from good people, you know, but something. I almost had to say, you know, maybe if we become known, put up signs entering Karnes County, and are we ticket for dumping and littering or something? Start to act upon some of those things. It would even make a lot of the citizens more aware of it because I know as a citizen, when you had the keeping Karnes safe, there were a lot of people that got hooked up to that and started paying attention to, hey, I'm going to report that car, even if it was somebody that they knew.
Yeah, that's true.
And also for the big trash, like the refrigerators and the scoles and the sofas, you guys had made a motion, you were going to buy, check in to get the game cameras, and that was also called on. But may I suggest that when one Commissioner retires, resigns, gets elected out, that the other one follow through on his obligations.
We'll keep a close eye on that.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Cheryl, you know, we've talked about this for a long time. And to me, again, it starts with, you know, most of the stuff in these convenience stores is that one, you drive by any convenience store there is, you're going to see there are trash cans full of trash. Home parks, you're going to see a dumpster, you may not see a dumpster, you may see a little old trash can you buy at Walmart. When I first got elected, I went and got inmates, and we went around, we picked up mattresses, and we picked up tires to the point that it was crazy. I've got a contract with the state, and this is just a, I'm waiting for Luntsville to send back a, the approval to get the inmates for a natty date. Warren Bright, before we left, signed it, so, and they had a change in leadership, I've got a call out there, they've had some other issues we're going on right now, but I can try to see if I can at least get them for a day or two at a time till they get this contract signed. But with all that, one, I think we need to, you're right, we need to approach the, I think first thing we need to do is talk to the Chamber of Commerce. They need to sit there and get, with all the businesses in their town, and get on bandwagon as well because, as you said a while ago, early when we talked, if you want people to come to your community to work, to live, who wants to come to an eyesore? And that's probably what we have now. And again, I think we need to talk with the cities, see what they can do to help us control, you know, their comp, their litter that has created, created by some of these convenience stores. You talked about by Nicky Milton's behind Sonic, that's all this video of Coke of Kennedy right now. But nevertheless, we all need to sit there and talk together and try to ration this out. Now, you know, I like your idea about forming a committee that's, you know, like Keep Karnes County Clean or something. Maybe we can get extra signs from text, I don't know about don't litter, you know, pick up your litter, whatever it is. We can contact all these companies and ask them, all their contractors, please pick up, because I know after that last big heavy rain we had with all the flooding water and stuff, I drove down some roads and all you could see was water bottles, trash bags up in the fences where the main waterway worked. Now, you know, that's all from just people throwing stuff out. You drive down the roads right now, I can show you six roads that's got five, six mattresses. I asked Ronnie the other day Mitchell to go down 139, somebody just dropped five thirty, threw a bag of trash out and had a bunch of lumber to scatter across the road. So it's, it's, it's a county problem, it's not just people passing through, it's people living here as well. And we just need to do, maybe get a recycling thing. I know the lady from Sarah was here, and she was going to, they want to have another cleanup day, like we do to pick up stuff. But those are all little fixes, but like you say, we need an onboard program just to do it.
So let me ask you, so what are your idea about, what are your ideas about ticketing the people that are in violation of these things? Because you've got to do some kind of deterrent to stop it. Cleaning it up is wonderful, but that's a Band-Aid.
Could I inject one little thing? I have called the deputy out, and I have filed mail with an address and a name. They can go and talk to the person, they cannot ticket them because all they have to say is that accidentally you were on my vehicle.
That's one of the deals that happens with Mrs. Sparks, is Carl found a bunch of bags on the side of the road, and he ripped them open, and he found the same person's name in each bag. And he went and talked to the attorneys about it and everything else, wanting those people cited. We were told we couldn't do it because we didn't see it done. And they could say, and even though it was two or three bags, they could say it flipped out of the back of their truck. It was an accident.
So are, so would you agree that it would be a smart idea to invest in some type of a cameras to put out in certain areas? That's what they had talked about.
The high trash areas, you know, like the creek beds.
You can't do it, you know, but like, I know Tracy had mentioned that we call it a game marden, but you know, I don't know.
I don't know what little creek bed is behind the front of your W because that is a bad dumping site. I think where you meant fenced is off, so that's not a problem.
It seems as though those dumping sites kind of change though because, you know, they start to get like, smart, yeah, and then they.
There is a couple of suggestions that I have, just kind of what I used to do or help the communities with. One of them is there is an organization called Keep Texas Beautiful, and someone really needs to contact them because you can form a local organization underneath their umbrella. So I knew nothing about that. And I would suggest that you perhaps also either officially ask Julia to check into it, or someone at the River Authority to maybe have Ronnie Hernandez, our, he's, well, I guess that's still what he's doing, is that he works mostly with illegal dumping and that, mostly in the creek ways, but he has the contacts at TCQ, and we had helped to form, we, the past we, Sarah, had helped to form an organization or a group that was called, originally was Fair Regional Watershed Management, and then we formed one for downstream also. Or, and so anyway, he would have the contacts and maybe we could form a watershed management group down here, that would be a formal group, and Sarah has done some, where they, they'll lead those groups, I can't think of the word for that, but, you know, they'll help to form them and help to lead them, and I think that that would be a great idea, and maybe, maybe they're the organization that can help y'all at least get it together. They may not be able to spend a lot of time, but at least get you together and get you on track.
That would be good. I still think that we still need to look at the root of the problem and try to get to the root of the problem so that we can start that all together.
That is a great idea to form, start forming a committee even if it's under their umbrella.
And then, I mean, the sheriff, the sheriffs maybe at some point should come up with an officer that's specific to illegal dumping, and maybe that's not all he does, but he has, but he learned all about the illegal dumping, the laws related to illegal dumping, how to prosecute, and works with the local DA on those specific cases. You know, maybe that's not all he does, but that is his specialty, so they could have called him or her in for that specific thing. But we, the River Authority was looking to work with the communities to get some local control over these issues.
I really feel that without a joint effort, this is going to be going nowhere. There has to be joint effort of Commissioners' Court, the committees, and the people, the chambers, whoever.
So when can we expect some things to start happening with us?
We need a person from York precinct, P. Yar, we need a.
Did you have Mr. Rosales?
I had talked to Robert, and he had told me he would be more than happy to join.
And then you had Darlene at Wiffel?
At least I'm interested, I'm going to ask him again.
I waited for a.
I'm sorry?
Crowe.
Oh, Crowe.
I waited to be called for a meeting.
Kitty Crowe?
The first meeting.
Is that who you have?
Yeah.
Who did you have?
Wait, one he'll talk to. Hold on. Don't put me in the seat.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I waited after they appointed me, Tracy, or, you know, Stormy, and then Tracy appointed me on the committee. The only reason I found out Cheryl was on the committee because they ran a lot of it through the paper a couple of years later.
This has been going on for some time. How about if we contact Keep Texas Beautiful, and they probably could give us more guidance than we could start on our own. Not that we don't know how to do it, but since they've already been doing it, they have a committee formed, and we could fall under their umbrella, start our own, it doesn't matter. But the guidance that they could give us could, you know, get us ahead a lot quicker than if we start from ground zero.
So are you going to contact them?
I can contact them, I don't have a problem with that. And then I'll talk to the judge, we'll put it on the agenda, and then we'll give you a call back, and then we can meet here, and then we'll get guidance from them. Not that we don't know how to do it, but if they've already been doing it.
So in the meantime, are you make sure, Pete, I didn't hear who you said you had from your precinct?
I talked to.
Crowe, who's the mayor, Gary?
Yeah, they may not want to do it.
Gary.
He said he might be, Gary?
Gary.
Gary Crowe. And he said he would, and he was supposed to contact, I gave him your number or whatever.
He never called me. He never, no, he never called me. Carl told me the other day that he thought it was Darlene Wiffel that you had had.
Well, he may have talked to someone else. I didn't talk to Darlene, I talked to Gary Crowe. Of course, they may have talked, but they didn't do it. I don't know what they get, but anyway.
Well, the bottom line is, we're going to get some action taken, Paul, is that correct now?
Yes. I will contact them as quickly as I can, maybe sometime today, and then I'll give you a call. I don't have your number, I have Cheryl's number.
Okay, it's in a book.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll start, and then try to see, I guess y'all need to see who you're going to have on the committee, and how we're going to farm it, and what we're going to need, and all those things, you know, so.
And we don't know if they can make it for the time we have the meeting, but we will, you know, I'll do my best to try to get them as quick, here as quick as possible depending on, you know, when they have time to.
And I guess the first part would probably be talking to some of the people in the city, at the city, like the city managers or something, I don't know.
I can meet with the one at Clark City, y'all want to meet with the ones in the other cities?
Why can't y'all open the dump one time a month for free? If they're talking about all the ways.
I talked.
That's true. I just mentioned that.
Because I'd rather, I'd rather people dump for free than us have to pick it up off the side of the ground.
Exactly.
Costs us all the manpower of road bridge. We have people out there, and I'm not saying this is being ugly, but it's not the evil for shelf folks bringing their refrigerators to throw them off on the side of the ditch.
There's pros and cons to it. The judge did say that before, but there's pros and cons to everything. We open it up one time, one time a month, right? There's going to be, just say, you know, Mr. P., Mr. X., whatever, right? It's not going to be able to make it that day. They're going to come calling us here and saying, we were out, we were on vacation, our kids were sick, we were sick, we were this, we were that, we're that. It's not fair that every, our neighbors got to know the trash, but our neighbors got to.
Well, I mean, we'll have to do something, but I know, because I was at the end of the week.
You know what I mean, we're going to hear it, the pros and cons, we're going to.
Oh, I know, but you, you know what? That was their opportunity. Maybe they need to make their plans around, you know, if you're going to get that service once a month, this is just a contract to the pickups that are around town or stuff. But I was there this week because I took something myself, I took a load. And I'm not, I wasn't very educated either about how I needed to have certain things in different, you know, heights. And so I think people need to know too, like, and I think that's a good idea, maybe you have it up, because it was $10, which, you know, was all right for me, but you know, I mean, $10 is $10 for some, you know, it's awful. It's, it's hard enough for some people to get to the dump to begin with, let alone then have to pay to do it. So maybe having it like Judge Shaw was saying, once a month, okay? And if those people can't make it, well, make it the next month, and I'm sorry, you know?
There's also another thing that I'm just, right now, I'm just thinking, I'm sure the audience probably about 50 things, but what I'm thinking with this, a lot of people are going to wait for that one time a month, they're going to go over there, we have two roll, we've got two roll trash cans, canisters, they're going to fill those up by the time they know it, they're going to be overfilled by lunchtime, we're not going to know what to do. There, we can't stop people because bringing in trash, we're going to have them all over the floor, all over the ground, flying everywhere on that area of Clark City. It's going to be trial and error, but there is pros and cons to it, but they're waiting for that free day. And they will overload us in a few hours.
But you know what, then it'll be like concentrated in one area, maybe, you know, and it wouldn't be, I, I think this is good, I think, you know, talking about this, and we don't want to take a thing more of your time, but I think it's a good issue that something starts to take place on that because.
Since they've done it before, I'm just thinking that bring them up, they can guide us, and then Keep, Keep Texas Beautiful, and we'll go from there. We don't like what they have, and we go on our own, it's not.
And I think, isn't the Adopt a Highway program, that's through text dot two, and you know, a lot of times the traffic's so high, people aren't out there, they're not in.
Well, yeah.
Are we scared too to stand on the side of the road?
I got stopped by a city cop the other day in the intersection because people had trespass on my fence, put up these signs, and I have a horse mare, and they're nailing onto those fences and hanging stuff on those wires, worried about it. I went up there to take the something down, I got stopped by the city cop, and they told me, ma'am, you do not need to be here, this is a very bad intersection, you know, I was already on the shoulder, and then, and he said, you know, I could probably be in a ticket sheet for stopping there. All right, so people don't want to go pick up, they're taking their lives now.
Well, I know that the deputies, when they're driving around their county, not, the thing I hate to see is the signs, there's a little sticker sign that's, you know, we buy old houses.
Exactly.
They can pick those up, county boys, just see them on the road, can pick them up. If you see somebody putting them in, the sheriff's department can ticket these guys because those are illegal.
Fifteen signs, one morning I woke up and I had crossed my, the fence post, nailed into the fence post, fifteen signs. I called the company, told them, I said, you were trespassing, had this, you know, but it does, it does, it makes it ugly, but they, they go, do it on the telephone calls and on the side of the road, and then they're gone, they're trapped.
And James, you know, like on a Saturday, if you want to open the dump up, we could say, all right, to this day, we're only going to accept refrigerators or mattresses or something like that, you know, we don't have to take.
Both items.
Both, just both items on it, so we wouldn't overflow a dumpster or something that we need to, you know, I mean, we could probably be selective of what we would do see that one day, and do it for like 8:00 noon or something.
Okay, well, maybe the particulars that we can get ironed out in a meeting, you know, but we'll be expecting a call from the, I guess, James, or from the person, Michelle before.
So when we come back, the Commissioners' Court again, we will have four people for one precinct?
I'm hoping for that. I'll look for one for me, like I said, last time.
That's not as easy as you think sometimes, Miss Moore, sometimes people don't want to do it.
Mr. Rosales wanted to do it the last time, but does he this time? I don't know.
But you know, it can't be that hard, James, to get some people, I mean, get a, people that are concerned, and you've got a big precinct.
Would Margaret Goffard, whose precinct, 218, whose precinct is she being at? Yours, you. Talk to her, she cleans her garbage.
Well, if everybody would stop being so lazy and pick up after themselves.
They won't.
I mean, I hate to say it, and I'm not getting in, but I live one block away from the courthouse, and my kids are out there picking up trash from oil flow workers all the time because they're so lazy that they let the trash float. But I'm not going to sit there and let the trash continue piling up because then it looks ugly. I get my own kids out there, so some people just have to automatically start doing stuff themselves in order to keep the place clean.
Well, we have several people in the county that do do that, but it's not enough.
That's what I'm saying, but everybody's not the same.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And will be guys for action, or we'll be back? I mean, James.
I will give you a call back. I'll get in contact with them, I'll see when they have time to come down here, and we'll set, I'll talk to the judge, we'll set an appointment, an agenda item, whichever one we can, the closest one we can, then I'll give you a call.
And I would be more than glad to meet with Port Pat and the city manager, Kennedy or Homer Law or Brad.
And in the meantime, as Commissioners and people in this meeting, I want you to go right around and look and see, and just take note of what's going on.
That's a good idea. Do you wanna bring the city, do you wanna bring the city guys over there?
Now, remember, uh, yeah, and remember though, our mayors and our small municipalities work, so we can get them in the, Mr. Hubman works out of town and Mr. Lot works and, um, you know, Ford's available, but-
I think that's a great start, just to get with the county, the city people to-
And sometimes, you know, sometimes if they have the means, they'll, they're able to, and sometimes, you know, our small municipalities already stretched too, they don't have a lot of times, so, I mean, they might have some ideas, but they might not have a lot to be able to, do you know what I'm saying? They don't still have that infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, number seven, is to approve Clean Environment's proposal to perform additional monitoring for asbestos abatement at the courthouse, not to exceed $721.
On this item, when, um, we did our asbestos abatement on the first floor, um, when they took down a closed chase, there was some asbestos found in that closed, in closed chase that, you know, could not be seen when they did their survey. Um, so what we did is we went ahead and had, uh, the contractor go ahead and demolish any closed chases on the second and third floors to try to see if there's any other hidden asbestos in the building, because we, our goal is to be completely asbestos-free at the end of Phase 1A. And the second floor, there were some additional tiles that were found. So the monitoring is done as a contract with the county and then the contractor's handling is a change order removing that asbestos. So the $725 is for a day of monitoring during that removal that will happen on the second floor. So we believe that we have uncovered every area that could contain asbestos, uh, at this time and this should finalize that.
I believe that we approve, uh, item number seven, which precinct?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries slide zero. The next item on the agenda is to approve invoices for asbestos consulting from Clean Environment's for Karnes County Courthouse Phase 1A, $725, for Karnes County EMS project for $180, and for Karnes County Road Bridge project for $120.
Okay, and so this is the $725. When they found the asbestos on the first floor, they, um, they had missed some previous asbestos, so we split the bill and they went ahead and on their nickel, they did the monitoring for this asbestos that they missed and then on our nickel is the asbestos that, that was not known. So they took care of that. And then while they were down there though, instead of paying another, uh, $600 in trip charges and new project charges, they ran over to EMS and Road and Bridge and looked at those projects for you, because I told them those were gonna be coming up. So on those, we only had to pay the testing fees of the materials instead of the trip charges, so we really, um, came out well on that. And so these invoices paid for the Road and Bridge EMS and the asbestos monitoring that was up the first floor. EMS and Road and Bridge were found to be asbestos-free, so that was very exciting. One of the first things I think I've done down here that has come out with a clean bill on, on this. So those buildings are good for, um, when it is, comes time to remodel or demolish those buildings.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Eight, as written.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries slide zero. Number nine, this authorized Titan Factory Direct to buy decks with stairs and railings at front and back door of EMS trailer and provide white vinyl skirting installed on EMS trailer for cost not to exceed $31,000.
Thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one hundred dollars, excuse me. Thirty-one hundred dollars.
Yeah, you know, when we got the proposal for the trailer, they wouldn't give us any cost for the skirting for the deck or for the utilities because they wanted to do a site visit first and have the, the trailer purchased first. So when they came out and down to do their site visit, they gave us a proposal for mechanical, electrical and plumbing, and I, I met with, um, with Commissioner Dubnick at the site and their costs were much higher than if the county coordinated it themselves. So the county's working on coordinating the mechanical, electrical and plumbing services to the trailer, um, but the, you do need the stairs and railings and the vinyl skirting and so the cost for those is thirty-one hundred. We've received drawings from them showing that those stairs and railings would be per code, so we checked that and there won't be any ramps because the, the trailers for EMS, which are exempt from handicap requirements because you can't be handicapped and perform those duties. So this will take care of, um, getting the skirting and the stairs and the rails and the decks in place at the front and back door of the trailer.
How, how big are these decks?
They're six by six, six feet by six feet.
Railings?
And then they have railings per code, yes, they're wood and, and the railings meet the requirement for four inch spheres, you know, to be, to meet the codes.
And the vinyl skirting, that's all gonna have the backing on there or is this gonna be vinyl skirting right on the edge of the ground, is it gonna have the extra support on the back?
That, I did not ask them.
So it's gonna have the extra pin on each one?
It's $1,500. I did not ask them for the detail on it, it's their standard vinyl skirting.
It's $1,500 for the skirting and $16 for the decks?
And that's $1,600 for the decks, $800 for each deck.
All the decks are gonna be pressure treated?
Yes, that's to accommodate wood.
I believe that we've got to remember to ask the judge.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries slide zero. The next item on the agenda, number ten, Lorraine Daly to present project cost and budget recap for courthouse, jail, EMS and Road and Bridge projects.
So what we're doing is monthly going ahead and presenting to you the, um, our recap of money that's spent and, and that way we can make sure we're staying within budgets and, and, um, and all of the costs are being applied to the job. And if there's anything that, since this is the first time we presented EMS, a lot of there may be some things that you have shown that you've expended that I'm not aware of or is not on here, so we'll probably just need to get together and make sure those are all shown. The, the, um, cost that was presented in July is in the first chart of the recap and then I have a column for any modifications as we go through, because this is not a, I know EMS, we're doing it on a stage by stage basis and I'll be presenting the design development with updating costs for you for our, the last time that we presented. Um, but what we have is a, a recap chart for the front and, um, and it shows to date and then each of those, um, each of those items are backed up by a chart in the back that shows the actual invoices that have been submitted, approved and paid. And then we keep these charts to help us keep track of when something's approved by the court, we put it in the chart and then we make sure that the invoice doesn't exceed that, so that if it does to some reason, then we have to come back and find out why and, and get additional approval and then we show when the invoice was paid. So on the EMS project, I show for environmental testing, we have the $180 for the asbestos testing. We have the survey that was done for $1,250. The approved budget was up to $2,000, so we were within that, um, that range. We have the AEPs to date and then the trailer, half of the trailer that was, um, paid down payments for the trailer. We have the AEP reimbursable expenses and then we have the, um, the geotech survey and I see where, she has the survey on here twice and I didn't catch that. So that survey, nothing has been spent on the geotech yet, so that is, that I didn't catch. We spent $1,250 on the survey. The geotech, um, is approved up to $4,500. I'm waiting for the civil engineer to document exactly where that building's gonna fit, um, within the site and see if we need to shift it any so that we can get our, our structural engineer to tell us where to do the borings and then we're ready to get the geotech, um, done. So on the, um, project cost recap, I show that we have spent $53,464, less the $1,250 that we had in there twice. Let's see, then on, last time I was here, there was some discussion about do we need a Phase 1 on the EMS site? So we contacted the environmental engineer that we've been working with and they have documented that, um, it's the, a Phase 1 environmental site assessment is not required for the demolition of the old EMS building and the construction of the new EMS building. It's a site that you've already had and it's been used by EMS through, and owned by the county already. And we just need to make sure that when we demolish that building, we put in the documents that any, that they have to test for lead paint and, and demolish accordingly if there's any lead paint in that building. So I do have documented that a Phase 1 is not required there. Now, when we get to Road and Bridge, which that's your next recap, um, I do have a line item in there for environmental cleanup and testing, um, for the asbestos that was done already for $120. And then when we do move Road and Bridge, we are gonna need to test around those fuel tanks because there's chances are that fuel has been spilled and we'll have to do some, a little bit of cleanup around the fuel tanks. Um, so we'll need to make sure we budget for that. Um, so on Road and Bridge is your next recap and I show only the $120 for the asbestos testing and then the AEPs so far, I don't show anything else that we've expended on Road and Bridge to date. The jail, I wanted to wait until we have our meeting to, um, do any value engineering and finalize the contract with the contractor and present that to you next time, so that that can be updated as of, um, as of this, um, decision. So the Karnes County Phase 1 restoration is the next one that I wanna present to you. That project is, is essentially closed out and so other than Mr. Loon's, uh, fee that he, we still owe him $2,000 for the demolition and asbestos abatement work that he did, um, in closing out that project and any reimbursable expenses that he has. I, I modified the chart just a little bit because until we did the selective demolition and the asbestos abatement, we were spending project contingency money, um, every time we made the decision, when we, a decision to do any of the additional, the paint analysis and, and testing and things that we decided, uh, over the year that I've been with you. Um, once we did that change order to do the asbestos abatement and the, um, selective demolition, we used up the project contingency with that change order, so then the rest of these items, you know, kicked into being, um, bond money. Um, so at the top of this chart, we have our total grant that was awarded of $926,820. And then we have, um, we had the original construction contract that was estimated plus the estimated professional fees, which had an original project contingency of $92,000. When you go down, um, the actual signed contract and what was, was actually completed, you still had your, um, total project, uh, award of $926,000. The original construction contract was $772,000. There were two change orders, the largest one was the one that we did for the selective demolition and asbestos abatement of $171,000. So you can see there that $171,000 used up that $92,000 contingency. Um, so then we had Fisher Hex fees and they haven't invoiced since, um, March the 14th. They have invoiced through 100% construction administration. I have not seen the closeout report and, um, that does have to be done per the historical commission and that, my understanding is that was not in their original contract, so we need to review that and make sure that it was not, I did a cursory review, I didn't see it in there, so I'm gonna just read a little bit closer and make sure, but there, there will be some fee for that and I don't know how much. Um, that leaves a contingency balance of a negative $82,463, so that's the amount of bond funds that you've used. Now, this is over and above your matching portion, of course. This is, um, the matching portion is your, was it, is it 33%? 33, 33% of the, um, of the, of the funding? Or the project cost is used, um, less the funding? The, um, so each of these items are the same, uh, on this, what I call project contingency items that we've approved since, um, May of 2012 and we just, the only thing that was added here is the Clean Environment invoice for the asbestos abatement air monitoring that was done and then Mr. Loon's fees for closing up that project on the selective demolition and asbestos abatement, of which we still owe them $2,000. So in the end, at the end of Phase 1, we have spent $155,812 of the bond monies, plus your matching funds and you're very close to being closed out on that. And the charts behind the recap, the overall, just support the documents, um, on the overall sheet. Phase 1A, um, we'll be presenting at next month. Um, there were some, um, some additional shoring and things that needed to be done and I'm waiting for some final pricing to come in on where, exactly where we are on that, so I can present, I'll look back to you at the next meeting.
Anybody have any questions, Lori? Thank you, Lori. Number 11 is discussed. Number 11 is discussed, approved, disapproved, selecting a bond underwriter or bonds with approval, be approved by Commissioners for the jail project and Road and Bridge in the amount of $8 million. Mr. Henderson came and made us a presentation and, uh, he referred, recommended at our request, a bond underwriter, and I believe he recommended Samco. So, um, anybody have any questions about that?
I'll make the motion to approve item, Agenda Item Number 11, as written, with Samco.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any, any opposed? Motion carries slide zero. The next item on the agenda is to approve the proposed budget.
We have to have a hearing now, this, uh, on this, uh-
Public hearing?
He's coming back on, sit to the chamber?
Yeah, but I'm just gonna have a public hearing.
I don't know, I gotta get the file.
All right, I'm checking.
And how quickly can we get the funds then, so I can make sure we- I'll let you know, once you tell us something. He'll be here in court to tell us, though.
This does not have anything in it for the Sheriff's Department. I'm waiting for information as far as the step schedule for salaries and the bodies that will be filling the new positions, so I can accurately budget dollars for that department. Due to the time constraints, I'm sure I had missed inadvertently or put in something that was not intended, so please look at it very closely. You'll notice the first page is just a brief summary without the Sheriff's Department and the proposed expenses over expected revenues, not including the Sheriff's Department. It's $2.3 million over our expected revenues. And that doesn't include the Sheriff's Department. And if you remember the presentation that the sheriff made when he requested the 13 additional positions, just to fund the equipping those positions was $633,000, not any other departmental expenses. So we're going to be well over our expected revenues.
$2.3 million?
That's where we are now without the Sheriff's Department.
Well, Lori, you sent, uh, everybody's proposed budget tomorrow.
Those that I had done yesterday, yes, I have ones for Road Bridge today.
$2.3 million without the sheriff, the total sheriffs or just additional?
Total sheriffs.
The total sheriffs, that's what, nothing from the sheriff I had.
Correct.
Do you have a, you have any challenge? Do you want to help the Sheriff's Department?
No, I don't.
Don't think which one's right.
I would imagine you're probably gonna be teeter tottering pretty close to $2 million if equipping 13 was $633,000.
I thought it would be over there.
Yes.
I just thought about coming to the office.
Come in, we'll be over, probably over $4 million more than-
At least. Caroline did just hand me a correction to JP Two's. The additional part-time work that she had requested at 20 hours per week is currently working on a fill-in basis, now very limited hours within her budget and she is paying her $10 an hour now, so she is requesting that that pay rate continue. The court also will need to establish the starting pay for clerical part-time and/or full-time positions, because if someone leaves, in my thoughts, they need to come in at a starting base rate, not whatever's in that line item.
What's the starting pay now, Tim?
About a 5% percent, that's a 10 and a half, if I'm, if we are working. But there's been a lot of people that have moved into positions when someone has quit or retired and they just continue at whatever salaries in there. or retired and they just continue at whatever salaries in there. And I will make a request because the same court should be setting next budget here. Don't do this to me again. I went to bed at 1:30 last night and I was back at the office at 10 after 6 this morning trying to get this done.
The Sheriff's Department did try and preliminary numbers. Do we remember what those preliminary numbers were or we can get a guesstimate? You're saying probably about $2 million?
That would be my wild guess. I can't do that because I don't have the salaries in mind. We have no idea until I get a count from them on how many in each position and who's filling them, et cetera, and their step increases to know how that's going to play out. They're supposed to be working on that for me this morning.
We did not work on it this morning, we're working on it currently. We'll give it to the board. This is the step, is that what she asked me to graphic the step graph?
I made the step and then I need, I sent you a memo yesterday. I need the step and then I need each individual, what position they will be filling as a lot of the warrants, I don't know what salaries for the same.
I sent you that this morning.
Just send it to the bar, send it over here.
It was, yeah. Probably around that one.
You know, I was thinking about that yesterday and about your specialized people and the whole time I was thinking I was in Austin. And what's specialized about a traffic cop or that you would have to, I mean, what's specialized? Every police officer we have should be able to stop traffic.
That's correct, Sheriff.
So why were they considered specialized?
Every traffic officer does not know, for instance, that's why we have DPS. We have DPS officers that go out, they're paid to write tickets and work accidents. It's the same thing with the officers that the Sheriff's is going to hire as far as the CME officers and traffic officers. They're going to write tickets, they're going to work accidents to help the troopers that are here. We only have three troopers and one commercial motor vehicle deputy, or I'm sorry, trooper that's going to be working. They're going to be specializing in the laws that they know versus a regular traffic officer. There is, and I'm sure every law enforcement officer would agree, the traffic code is never-ending and with the Eagle Ford shell coming in, or it is already here, the traffic is ridiculous. We need people out there to enforce these traffic laws, you know, slow down the traffic. We work more fatality accidents than any other county in the region and that's, and that's the truth there. And that's both as far as the traffic being heavy as all the highways in Austin along these county roads, you know, we always get complaints.
Just like on the county roads, I know like they're talking about the crash, they're talking about whatever. How do we enforce it if we don't have people out there to enforce it? I had a meeting today, I think I told you about yesterday, Sheriff Jeff, he was somewhere this week. I talked to him and he got back yesterday. We have people that are literally policing themselves out on this county road because we have copper wire and it's being sold everywhere and being sold just like huge, huge, huge amounts. We have one deputy out at night and so visually copper wire that says DeHova, you're fine in, aren't you? You're fine in Paul City. And just find out where that deputy is, that's all you have to do. And that's what people do. And so copper wire is at like an all-time high and people are stealing this stuff and our citizens are just getting around in the middle of the night because they know, the clerks are smart enough to know that we don't have anybody out there.
Currently with the, like I said, the major accidents that we're having, they shut down Highway 181, Highway 80s, 239. Whenever we have a major accident like that, everybody pretty much has to go and that's the deal with traffic. You've been out there, Mr. Dubnik, and I spoke to you many times on that.
Yeah, I know that too and I wonder, again, but I'm just asking.
No, no, and I'm trying to explain it and that's why, you know, a traffic deputy just doesn't write tickets. I mean, that's not what he's supposed to do. I mean, he's out there to write tickets, work accidents, slow down these trucks and there's, there's other laws than just speeding. I mean, there's, you know, racing laws out there, illegal change, passing, illegal passing. That's, you know, those are just as simple laws, there's tons of other ones that we could talk about.
Another question I had on 911 addressing department. They had requested a cell phone for when they're out on the road during their addressing, et cetera. That would be a departmental cell phone, not a cell phone allowance. So then is there a way possibly that could be piggybacked off the Sheriff's Department and DPS cell phones?
I would think so, Lori. That'd be cheaper for us. Hey Sheriff, would you do that?
What was that?
On 911 addressing, they want a departmental cell phone, can we add it to your plan just so they can have one?
Did you fax me that information this morning?
No, I didn't.
You emailed us and kind of checked my mail.
Are you asking regarding the cell phone? I didn't get that yet. I, no, I dropped one off, but that was the, the error card. I had the additional cell phone email that you sent me yesterday and I can add the other. How many, how many more do you want to add on to that?
Four for DPS and then one for 911.
That'll be 37, am I correct?
Yes. My math. Dwayne, I did not get it. Did you use KC Audit or Yahoo? I don't have it.
What's in your county, you're running?
That's not activated. Please go to KC Audit at Yahoo, please. You go to the budgetary contribution to review that closely, please, because when we had the workshop, y'all said $0 to Economic Development, so I did not include anything there.
What else, Lori?
On economic development during the workshop, y'all said $0, so I put $0 in for a budgetary contribution for them, so y'all need to be sure that's what you wanted.
You also put $0 in for the Historical Commission, I think we get.
They have a separate page. The Commission and Society are doing it, I did not ask for any money for the Commission issue.
Lori, did you get anything from the district judges for you guys?
No. Judge Saxon is on vacation until September 9th. I flunked in the 5% that the county was doing for other positions. I also used that same 5% on the corporate orders, but I will not be able to have clarification on that until they return or she returns. On Roden Bridge, we had talked about establishing a separate department for the permit officer and I just added the $1,000 for office supplies for that position. I don't have the pages numbered because I don't have all pages though.
There's numbers on the bottom.
Not on all of them. Anyway, as I was saying, I included $1,000 that had been discussed for office supplies Just for y'all's information, very last page, County's debt obligations for next year. That is not a required part of the posting, but I just included it so you all could.
Do you want to look at the county sales tax? Are we even in line to our shoulder? It's alcohol permits, it's a issue. I thought they took bingo away, Lori.
No.
I don't know, they might have taken bingo away.
Allowance.
Well, I have, no, I did, but there's other instincts that have, you know.
And the churches, you have.
What about the county sales taxes?
I don't look at it.
When will we have the final budget, Lori? It's be ready.
I have to confirm numbers with Ronnie on Roden Bridge and when I get the information from the Sheriff's Department, I have to put all those numbers in. So I would imagine it would be maybe 3 o'clock or so this afternoon?
What else did you make?
Capital outlay, the 3, 3.45 million pushed us over a lot too, right, for the jail? Well, there's a lot of things that push us over, but it's one of the major ones.
Like you look at that, you look at a quarter of a million for acquisition of properties, you look at a million for Roden Bridge, you look at 1.5 on the court house.
There's, there's a lot of capital outlay in Austin.
What are you missing, Lori, on the step schedule?
And the assignment of positions, so I don't know if it's what's scheduled.
Will we, will we email you that to different, your other email? I have a copy.
What do I email it to?
To her. Or your Yado account. We, we sent it to your county account, you want to send to your Yado account. I have a copy of the, what Sheriff sent to her. You want it?
Which is the, the way that the people are going to move around?
Yes, sir. And it's not naming everybody that's going to go in specific positions because. Okay. You want it?
Well, I need people by position so I know how to implement the steps based on salaries. That's what you're telling me?
You want it?
That's fine.
Well, nobody said anything, so I'm not going to walk up here with anybody saying that. I didn't make copies for you.
We are all of them. Does he put the numbers?
It'll be the most important. Thank you, Mike. Now, some of the positions are not filled.
Of course. And so any positions not specified here are just the 5% increase for jail staff, jailers, dispatchers.
Correct.
How was I here?
You know, I was thinking about that yesterday and about your specialized people and the whole time I was thinking I was in Austin. And what's specialized about a traffic cop or that you would have to, I mean, what's specialized? Every police officer we have should be able to stop traffic.
Every traffic officer does not know, for instance, that's why we have DPS. We have DPS officers that go out, they're paid to write tickets and work accidents. It's the same thing with the officers that the Sheriff's is going to hire as far as
So, what do you still need from Ronnie now, Sheriff?
I need to verify some things with Ronnie, but that doesn't have to be done during the court. It has to be done afterwards. He's like, his numbers, he's like, that. Has, you'll can't approve it now, anybody talk to the sheriff.
How long does that take to be put that in?
Like I said, it'll be till three o'clock or so. We still need to pay bills and then I need to go back and do it.
Pay bills, we only do that after we're...
Do you have that bill form?
Y'all ever get the bank statement, something?
I'm sorry?
Bank statement, please, something. Remember, we go, go back, I thought y'all had a...
The sheriff's report? Oh, well, uh, somebody forgot to put my report on the agenda today.
They know it's mine, they think...
I reminded, I called Monday and...
Did you talk to somebody?
And she said they got me this, uh, we'll just do them both on, um, yeah, in September.
Let's go to 14, pay the bills. That's where we're going, we're going to number 14. Folks, we can't hear in here, if you're buzzing around in there and you wonder why you can't hear, you can't hear because we can't hear either. Go ahead, Lona.
Okay, on page one, the first category of bills is, has to do with the courthouse and the jail facilities. You'll notice the courthouse expenditures total 296,338 dollars and 62 cents. The jail expenditures total 16,061 dollars and 19 cents. You go to page two, there's a bill from Dif and Navarro, 12,013 dollars and 37 cents. That's outside counsel. You go to page seven, under emergency management, there is an expenditure to S and P Communications, 42,502 dollars and 3 cents. We received reimbursement through a DPS grant for those communication projects. Anything else is, the norm, total for the jail cycle, 519,580 dollars and 85 cents.
Danny still here?
Yes.
Danny. What's the status on the fuel bill, hasn't been paid or something? Not paying, does anybody have any...
The bill got here after the last cycle, is in this cycle to be paid. Gina notified Shell that it got here late, will be paid late, and the precious folks at Shell cut the card off.
Why would it be paid late?
Because it got here late. They got here like two days after the last billing cycle.
We couldn't have paid it without all the literature, we could do an album, pay the bills like that?
It's not like I look at every bill every day to see what's coming up.
I mean, but this is for the, this is billed for the ambulances, right? Is that billed for the ambushes?
Filled for the ambushes and it also affects Sheriff's Department.
If we can propose, we have several officers with five different cards, Shell, Exxon, you name it. That's a lot of cards to take care of, why can't we just have one fleet card or one credit card that we could use even when we go to conferences and stuff like that? There's no reason an employee has to put out their own money to stay at a conference and they get reimbursed.
But between five cards, they should be able to find a station somewhere.
Correct, but Sheriff went up to Shell yesterday, he could not do that because the card didn't work. You know, that's...
We have looked into, and I have discussed that earlier in budget workshops, to get a fleet card, but we can't go to that step until we're at a point where we can do that. And hopefully, that will be October 1st.
Employee should not be using their credit cards to gas the ambulance. Right, but I'm just saying, if there's a office schedule that's given every year on when bills should be turned into the auditor's office, so that they can be done in a timely manner too, and the people keep up with their tickets, like they're supposed to.
If the sheriff went to get gas and his Shell card was denied, what option did he have? Valero, Texaco, Chevron? They have five accounts.
If y'all go, Mike, if y'all go to, like, a fleet card, then that's just gonna restrict you to one place.
My suggestion is a credit card.
Anywhere, so they'll have like four or five stations on there, like...
It should, it should be able to use for other expenditures, like, when you go on.
A fleet card's gonna have four or five stations on it, whichever one.
It's a fleet card, it's an acceptable, safe one.
If our transportation officer goes to Far Texas and there's no stations that think it was cards, what's he gonna do, you know? Of course, it's always optional, you might not take the fleet card either, but, you know, if Valero's not there, then you can't use the card. Not every officer has to need five cards or four cards to do that.
I'm making a motion, I'm being...
I have a second.
All in favor? Do you oppose?
I'm gonna go high, except for the, that's in the wrong, unless they have a question, but everything else...
Herb met with them yesterday or day before, I don't know what they did or whatever, but they went over the bills and Herb did call and tell me that everything is fine. And Herb also presented some other things, and he said he because that, we asked Herb to do this for us. We will recess until three o'clock.
Three o'clock, okay, Loma?
So, Lona, you got the sheriff's file ready for now?
Yes, I do. I have several change pages. First ones, the very first one on top is how I allocated the tax rate to distribute out the overages over and above anticipated revenues. You've got the general fund balance that shows the anticipated revenues and expenditures, and the ending fund balance, if all expenditures stay, would be almost 907 million, where we're starting with an estimated 12 million dollars. You have the 9/11 department, addressing departments correction with the cell phone based on the Sheriff's Department's rates. You have JP2's change based on the hourly rate of her part-time clerk.
That's about the $10?
Yes.
And then, can you show her chairs?
She, uh, yes, I meant that.
Yeah, she called, we didn't ask her, she called me about that a while ago.
Right, yeah.
That was who?
Caroline.
Yes.
Uh, stacked chairs and then two office chairs. Uh, then you go down to two pages where it's the Sheriff's Department. Total Sheriff's Department budget, 3,194,415 dollars and 29 cents. That includes all new positions, all changes in salaries, and equipping the 12 new positions with vehicles, equipment, weapons vests, et cetera. The original estimate they'd given was for 13 positions and it was 663,000 plus dollars, and I divided that and reduced it down to just 12 positions because they said they gave up one to fund the other increases in salary. The Highway Patrol Department, I put their cell phones in there. Uh, the emergency management coordinator summary page, it will show you on there the allotment of the tax rate and the estimated ending fund balance to be 46,866.95, where our estimated beginning balance is 76,548.09. Almost a $30,000 reduction. Roden Bridge, I got the information from Ronnie I needed. To circumvent some of the severe shocks to the unencumbered fund balance, I moved the 1.5 million dollars for Senate Bill 1747 and a half million dollars for contracted road repairs to Roden Bridge Special. It helped that hit you some, where we didn't have to hit the regular Roden Bridge fund balance so hard. Uh, the estimated beginning Roden Bridge unencumbered fund balance for fiscal year '14 is 2.8 plus million. The estimated ending fund balance would be 2,285,085.3. County Library, the budget summary sheet shows you the allocation based on the allocation I came up with for the tax rate. And then Roden Bridge Special, their total expenditures out of that fund would be 2,087,264 dollars and 89 cents. The estimated beginning fund balance is 1,922,814 dollars and 18 cents, and the estimated ending fund balance would be 1,920,475 dollars and 56 cents. And I used the M and O rate for applying to various departments based on the rollback tax rate that was discussed on August 13th during the court, and that was what was motion to use. So, that's why you...
I don't think you can make a specific motion to use that, I think it's as possible, it's what's on the agenda. So, if we made that motion, we might have made it out of order, and that might have to be amended.
Well, you have to give, prepare a budget, some designation to be able to allocate, and it can change, but that's what has to be real, to figure the revenues to support the budget.
And, Lona, the only other thing I'm missing is, I did talk to Rem and Havel about the forensic audit, they were supposed to be back to me. They're trying to figure out who to refer us to to get bids to see for something like that might cost. So, that's still a question, I will have to get that at the final budget. And then, on the ball balance thing, I'm still waiting for specific...
I took 30,000 in the plot price that Sylvia had emailed, just to be prepared.
Lona, I had a chance to go item by item, but we've got to set up a separate line item for the contract of contingency engineer things of that type.
Join, or, explain to me again, okay, y'all said earlier when we were here that the Java wooden people, in turn, they up, right, so most slots? And that's part of the 13 that you were wanting, correct? So, after the ones you move up, how many actually you gonna be getting, six?
Well, currently now, two.
Two right now.
Two right now. So, four, so actually, you're gonna be hiring just six new people?
Correct.
So, two move everything around?
Two are my opposition, or one is my opposition, another one is your...
Because everybody's, I'm assuming y'all gonna hire 13? I twenty...
Yeah, we promoted from within and moved up slots.
Actually, only, you're looking to hire 16 people?
Correct. So, only four being part of the 13 that, uh, allocated to us, or the 12?
Yeah. But it's not 13 new people?
No.
I just want to make that clear, Sheriff.
Can I ask you a question? How much do you officers get paid?
Right now? Starting at what right?
Thirty-four thousand. Yeah, thirty, thirty-four thousand.
What is that, right now, to...
Seventeen seventy-one.
Sixteen fifty-one.
Makes up your seventeen fifty-one.
Correct, sixteen fifty-one, now.
That's pretty cheap. I have to let you guys know, that's, that's pretty cheap, because officers are leaving areas like this to get to other areas because they're paying more, so... To get it up, how much are you trying to get it up to?
We got to, we're getting to...
Break it down for an hour. Starting salary for a deputy would be thirty-six thousand.
Sixty-seven.
So, it, breaking down would be seventeen dollars thirty-four cents.
Uh, is there insurance included?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
They have health in line and long-term visibility, and then they also have a retirement in the two-to-one match.
And what are the deductibles on that? Insurance, do you know?
The policy itself has a thousand dollar deductible, but the county has a health reimbursement account that they reimburse the second 500.
That's the actual...
Okay, with, with the sheet that was given us here, which is pay a post deputy versus what's here, sheriff's number is right, and like the chief would be a fifty-one.
It's because...
Clothing allowance?
Clothing allowance, you can load this down on the very bottom of the sheriff's page and says...
That's the only question.
They include it, and some of those, yes, and some of those also, it may say a salary, but then, in six months, they have a step.
We just wanna clarify that. It's not...
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm a little confused, my apologies, though, I'm gonna ask you. The other day, now I'm asked, because I did to get a permit before I make a decision. Okay, y'all saying 13 additional positions, right, or deputies the other day? Okay, and then, he's saying it's only six, so I'm a little bit confused. How many deputies and everyone, not inquiry, the jailers and dispatchers, do y'all have right now?
We have 14 deputies.
Okay, y'all have 14 deputies and that include how many?
And then, the...
And then investigator, so, so they're set, so they're 17. Okay, so how many will you have now?
If, like, if we move everybody...
If you, if you hire all the positions that this court is allowing y'all to have and everything, the additional position...
But once we have that, we move them up, you know, we have hired, like, right now, with the two, the two slots that are, that are vacant, we fill those, and if we move everybody to be able to staff what we have now, like, we have to hire four.
Let's say this whole, everything that y'all have passes and everything and everything, how many positions will y'all have to be able to fill this coming year on this new fiscal year? Is it gonna be 30, or is it gonna be 23?
To fill, or to...
Or to fill, or that has been filled, how many positions are you gonna have to be, to be filled or have filled?
Six.
Oh, to fill, I'm not sure.
No, that's what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, if you have 17 right now, the way I understood, Shelby said you're only gonna, you're only asking for six more, basically. So, is it gonna be 23 you're gonna have, if you have offered, you're gonna have 23, or you're gonna have 30? Am I asking the question right?
How many total we have, what will your total be in the department?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not...
Deputy, like, right now, we, it's 14.
Deputies, deputies, investigators, with the sheriff.
First thing he did, he wanted to hire, create positions.
No, yeah.
Twenty-seven not employed.
Not...
The sheriff and that chief.
Okay, plus investigator, whatever, so you're just gonna have 30.
Twenty-nine.
So, you're actually asking for the 13. Okay, the way I understood is that you're saying that...
Thirteen positions with six people to hire.
Right, because we, yeah, because we moved, the ones we moved, we moved up, right, that we move up.
You're not replacing the ones you move up?
Yes, yes.
What about this here? If everybody's talking, you're getting more confused, hold on, let up here and ask.
We, they, we asked, we understand this, they asked 13 positions.
That's right. But no, I know, I know that you're moving people within the department, but the total amount you're asking, in, in order to move the people in the department and in order to get what you need, it's 12 more, 13 more?
Do you wanna count the sheriff's?
Of course, I'm sorta, I wanna count the sheriff and everything. Of course, I'm sorry, I wanna count the sheriff and everything. Thirty. Okay, well, that's what I'm asking, they have seventeen. You have seventeen right now, but you'll have thirty, thirty total, if... All the positions are filled, so then you're asking, then you're asking for thirteen. The way Shelby, the way I was thinking that you were saying, you were saying that they were asking for six.
Thirteen slots, thirteen slots, you're moving people up, they only gotta hire six to make up the business.
If I got confused, if I got confused, somebody else might have got confused, I wanted to make sure that, that the people knows that you're asking for thirteen, not six.
Six new deputies would you hire?
If I can say something, out of the six new deputies, two slots are old slots, four are new slots.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm probably, I'm trying my best, guys.
I don't wanna get confused myself, so, I understand.
I just wanted to make sure that the public knew it's still thirteen and not six, right?
Yeah, everything has to do with the site.
Sorry, guys.
I understand.
I understand. I just wanted to clarify, I guess maybe everybody else understood, but I kinda got confused, sorry, guys.
That's what I was trying to say, is the six positions that we hired, but they got thirteen slots. So what do you want, you want to go ahead and sort of be next week, you have to go to budget review, then we can do it?
Oh, I can set up any, when we get back on Tuesday. I'm not gonna do it today, I have time, I gotta go, I gotta figure out mail before I go to Tuesday. So, what is it? Oh, yeah, come on.
So I was gonna ask the sheriff, that doesn't have nothing to do with this, so let's go, let's go.
We have to have the budget ready to be adopted so we can adopt and set the tax rate by September, we're gonna adopt and set on the twenty-third.
And these pages you gave us for the inserted... I gave a blank paper.
Yeah, every one, at the very beginning of it. So we just need something today, specifically to adopt, but we need to approve and propose budget providing, and we need to come out, we need to go through this, and what you have to do with it. And we'll forward on the whole budget, we'll go through it page by page by page.
Basically, what we need is a motion to approve the way it is now and then come back and do any changes.
Correct, to approve the budget for filing as proposed.
Providing, right, I'm sorry.
As proposed.
Proposed budget for filing. Well, no, because I have some, I have the proposed budget, there's some things that I have that I'm against, so whenever someone makes it, I'll go ahead and eye it, but I'm gonna take all the ones I'm against. Just information.
We've gone through all this and budget hearing and so forth, we have to give the one something to work with. Uh, we can see all changes.
Of course.
I know we've been liberal in a lot of things, uh, people think we're too liberal with the sheriff department, I think we've been liberal. But, uh, we're adding a whole lot of money to it, but we have the crime here, we have to do something about it. And I ask that they be, uh, selective, that the people they hire, people have to do it, not just promote people and get bodies. If they understand what I'm saying. Just because we're raising salaries, don't mean that everybody's worth that salary, you put someone that's worth that salary. And all, all of that, too, Ronnie and so forth. People are giving me all kinda advice, I just say about what should and shouldn't be done. But, uh, I think we have to adopt this today and let the one go ahead and work on it, let us all study it.
Not about it.
Approve it, approve the proposal today.
For filing.
For, for...
Approve for filing.
For filing.
That's it.
Therefore, I make the motion to approve this budget for filing. I'll say it.
All in favor?
I'm gonna, I, the only ones I'm gonna keep is the same ones that I had went against, I have to say them out loud or, I don't know.
You, you don't have to say no, I can hear you. Remember what I'm saying, can?
No, it's just, it was just the race for the election and there was the positions of the sheriff and then the, the some, the stuff to do with the sheriffs and then the one with the election.
The election.
Election.
Not the election, that's the...
I know, the race, from twenty-eight to thirty-six.
All in favor? Uh, with James, please note James' exception, any opposed, just James's exceptions, right?
Yes, that's it, that's all I have to do.
So, motion carries five zero with James's exceptions, can't talk. The next I want to get this to the adjournment.
All right, thank you.
I'm making.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Change this line?